Michael Griffiths, can you hear us on here? Just want to check the audio, make sure we're working here for you. I think you were muted there. Give me a thumbs up if you can hear. Oh, there you go.
I can just barely hear you.
Okay, sounds good. See what we can do here.
I now call to order this city council meeting, this September 11th, 2023. Before we begin, we'd like to have a moment of silence to remember those who've passed away on 9/11. May we stand, please? Thank you. You may be seated. Clerk will now call the roll.
Mayor Charles Briscoe.
Here.
Council at Large Bill Hannabass.
Here.
Ward one council members Diana Janey.
Here.
Roger Evans.
Here.
Krista Hodges here. Ward two council member Chris Gill. PJ Elder.
Here.
And Charles Smallwood, Jr.
Here.
Thank you. We'll now have our invocation by Pastor Roger Harding of the Fellowship Memorial Baptist Church.
That's great. Father, we do thank you for being a loving, gracious, merciful God. We praise you for your greatness and your goodness. Well, we come to you tonight thanking you for these men and women of this council that strive to make decisions that will create a greater quality of life and prosperity for all of us. Father, we do reflect on the moments, tragic moments of 9/11 22 years ago. And Father, we look at the devastation, but we also see the unity that came out of that. And Father, we pray that you will allow us to have a greater appreciation for law enforcement, for firefighters, for emergency medical professionals, and recognize that they put their lives on the line constantly so that we can live in safety. Father, we thank you for our hometown heroes that have served this country faithfully in the military. And we ask, Lord, that you will help us to, as a nation, to remain free. Father, we are grateful for the businesses and the organizations that strive to invest in our community, to make it better for all. Father, we ask that our community, we would learn to live in harmony and just demonstrate unity and respect one to another. Father, we are grateful for all that you've done for us, and we ask that you enable us to truly be one nation under God, to love you with all our hearts, soul, and mind, and to love our neighbors as ourselves. And we thank you for it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing. Councilman Roger Evans will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You have impeccable timing, Delegate Prit. We're going to have a presentation from Delegate Elliott Prit.
So I have a check for the city council for the mayor this evening on behalf of myself and Governor Justice. I have a $3,000 check to buy canine insert for one of the city's cruisers patrol vehicles.
Wow.
If you all would like to.
Yes.
I'd like to present that to you all if that's possible.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much. Good to see you.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, I'm going to need about two feet. I haven't lost that much weight yet. It's a little tight back here, man. Okay, we are going to continue on one of our very own, Josh Jones. That's right, you. Yeah, surprise.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Um, I have a presentation of an award. Um, on July 6th, 2003, the 911 center dispatched units to the New River Gorge Bridge for a male subject standing in the middle of the bridge overlooking the railing on the southbound lane. While three deputies approached the subject, he climbed over the railing, proceeded to lower himself down, hanging onto the railing over the bridge. The deputies grabbed a hold of his arms, trying to pull the subject back over the railing. They were soon joined by a fourth deputy. They were still unable to get the subject back across the railing. It wasn't until the rescue was joined by Sergeant Jones of the Oak Hill Police Department that officers were able to drag the subject between the railing and concrete barrier, bringing him safely up over and onto the bridge. Sergeant Jones and other four deputies are being commended for their heroic actions that saved this individual's life. At this time, it is my honor, honor to present Sergeant Josh Jones of the Oak Hill Police Department with the Life Saving Award. Your actions on that morning resulting resulted in the saving of a precious life. Congratulations, Sergeant, and keep up the good work.
Our very own hero here in Oak Hill, and Chief told me when you first started, you only got to carry one bullet. We will now have our reading and approval of minutes five.
I make a motion to dispense the reading and approval.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion's been properly moved the second that we dispense with the reading of the minutes. All those prepared to vote say, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. All right, well, we shall move on. We'll now have our Treasurers report.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Treasurers report.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been properly moved the second that we accept the Treasury report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Any correspondence?
Yes, sir. We have two correspondents. The first letter, I put both of these in the pocket. Would you like me to read both of those?
I think we probably.
One is, is from concerned citizens.
I, I do understand that we usually don't read the anonymous.
That's what has happened before, that if the letter is anonymous, it's not read.
Okay, then that's fine.
But I, I mean, that's up to council, that's.
It's up to you guys. You guys want to know?
It didn't sound. It's just a concerned citizen. It's in your pocket.
Well, if the normal practice is we don't read them, then we move along.
Okay, so that's the one that was from concerned citizens. Then we have one from former council members. Would you like me to read that one?
That one I would like you.
Okay. Dear Mayor Briscoe, I'm somewhat perplexed that a certain council member or members have attempted to place the most recent proposal to increase sewer rates on the immediate past city council, especially since a debacle and unwise decision was made during the period of 2014 to 2017, and no adjustments or reviews have occurred until August 2023. The city manager during that period forced annexation on the Menden residents and accepted liability and responsibility for their arbuckle PSD, not to mention a sweetheart deal with Beaver Land Company. He either knew or should have known PSDs are that by statute, the responsibility of county commissions. So now some of these same persons are proposing to increase rates on former arbuckle PSD customers as well as the Oak Hill residents within the city limits. This is egregious mismanagement. Please reconsider burdening the mistake of the past of the backs of the Oak Hill residents. Thank you respectfully. And it's signed by Leonard Bigford, David Perry, unable to recognize the third signature, Daniel E. Wright, and Steve Hazlett.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, folks, we read that because we want to be transparent and we want you to know what's going on and what is going on in the city of Oak Hill right now. We are working on your sewer rates, and that's why we are here today mainly. But we do have some unfinished business, and we'll get over that after we get your personal sewer rates taken care of. We're going to try to do that today, okay? And that includes all of us. Everybody's going to get a little bummed, okay? So we'll work on it. We're going to start with citizens' comments. Right now, we're going to start with former Mayor Fred Nudick. If we will please keep it to three minutes. Thank you, sir.
So Mayor and council members, I would like to say that I passed out a booklet of the West Virginia Sports Festival, which was held many, many years ago in Oak Hill, and it's now the Oakleaf Festival. Right. Very interesting. You need to, I thought you might like to see it and everything. And the only other thing I like to say is that last Friday I was robbed at my home. I guess they thought that I used to be the mayor many, many years in Oak Hill and the city judge, because back then the mayor was the city judge for many years in Oak Hill, and I think the police commissioner too. But anyhow, the police, police department and the police officers were there a snap of a finger, and they've been doing a good job, and they've caught the person that robbed me. And I'd like to thank the police department in Oak Hill. And if it wasn't for us, we'd be in big trouble in small cities. Same things is happening in small cities. It's happening in large cities today. And I think we should give the police department a big hand for the job they're doing great in the city of Oak Hill.
Chief, you guys are doing a wonderful job. As you know, I had to call them last week myself. Had some young ladies prowling around the grass, but, you know, kids will be kids, so. Adults, I could have probably handled. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, now we're going to have Ms. Kat Merritt.
So good evening. Happy Monday. Um, the Oakleaf Committee would like to greatly thank the city of Oak Hill, the city workers, police department, and street crew for the enormous help offered during the Oakleaf Festival. Without your help, we could not accomplish such a successful festival. We would also like to acknowledge Monty Price and his crew for making the band sound fantastic. Fundraising is already beginning for the 25th Annual Oakleaf Festival. Again, thank you for all of your help and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Mr. Daryl Thomas.
First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Hannabass and Day Day there for helping me out last week on a little matter I had in Menden there. They were more efficient, more than I think I am. We've had miscommunications here since past couple times. All I'm trying to do, you people are facing the sewer increase on 2,000 gallons. Unless you're 80 years old in a wheelchair, waiting on your kids to come give you a bath, you use more than 2,000 gallons on a month. That's all I'm trying to get across is what is the increase going to be after 2,000? What is your thousands of gallons going to be? That's all I'm asking. That, and I'm also asking project, using the money the increase going to do for sewer project. Well, what project? Is it going to be a needle eye project, some useless bathroom that we don't need that's going to cost the city more money in terms of the power to run it and, and the water to supply it? Or is it going to be something useful, something helpful? What's it going to be? That's all I'm asking. I didn't mean to be smart, didn't mean to cuss and all that, but I just can't seem to get you people to understand what I'm trying to get. I mean, there's probably 3% uses 2,000 gallons of water in this town. So we just want to know what's, what's it going to be so we can figure out what these bills are going to be. Well, I just can't see you can get a straight answer, but anyway, that's all I want to say. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Michelle Rizer.
Hello. So on a quick side note, I got stopped on the way in by Mr. Jeffrey, and he just wanted me, since I was coming in, to let everybody know how pleased he was and to thank everyone for all of their hard work and everything that they did over the Oakleaf Festival. He thought it was one of the best one yet. He's a member of Build the Hill, if you're not familiar with it, and they're all for force building in Hill, making things better. So just going to pass that along for him real quick. Um, but what I am here for mainly, I have already spoke with Chris Gill on this as a member of the Critical Incident Stress Management Team, and I've also talked to Mr. Briscoe and Josh Jones in chief. Um, we, I, well, I, as a chapter lead for Jeep Group here in West Virginia, are organizing Wheeling for Hope, which is an event fundraiser for the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention. This occurs in Oak Hill at Ace Adventure Resort at their mountaintop resort on September 30th. What we are doing is from nine to four, we will have trail excursions. Ace graciously gave us the resort and gave us 600 acres to carve out three separate trail systems for all off-road vehicles. And then from four to 11, we will have a ribbon cutting ceremony with the Chamber of Commerce. The mayor, I think, is supposed to be there. The Crisis Incident Stress Management Team has been a fantastic support, and they're helping us out with our EMS coverage. Oak Hill Police Department's going to take care of our security there, fire department, things like that. Um, so we'll have the ribbon cutting at four, and then we have live bands, silent auctions, um, food vendors, merchandise vendors. But the most important thing is we have a very, very large counseling area with a counseling tent. What this fundraiser is for, it is all nonprofit, and our main goal is to get the outreaches, the resources out to the public. A lot of people, you know, everybody knows about suicide, but nobody really realizes. Well, I mean, I think that was a great intro, uh, you know, to that, because as a matter of fact, in the state of West Virginia, we rank four in the nation, fourth in the nation for suicide rates. And with that, between the ages of our children and our young people, between the ages of 10 to 34, 10 to 34, we are second. That is the second cause of death is suicide, and that's secondary only to a grouped number of vehicular accidents, accidental shootings, and drownings. So if we place those one at a time, suicide rate would be number one in the state of West Virginia between the ages of 10 to 34. So it's very, very important that we get resources out to people and that they understand what's available to them out there. So encompassed in this, in this counselor tent, we have a set chance. They do equine therapy. They're going to be bringing their horses. We have American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, West Virginia Royal Health Association. Can I get two more minutes? Uh, we have, I'll take theirs. They didn't use it. They, uh, we have the Mission 22, the VA administration, and then there's also a children's book. Do I have to sit down?
Uh, today, yeah.
Thirty seconds, okay.
Take, take 30 seconds. We'll, we'll afford you that.
Okay, thank you. So anyway, this counseling tent, because this is the most important part of the event, we want to get information out. VA Administration, Mission 22, and to reach the children in that precious age and below 10 and 10 to 34, the Fed County Sheriff's Department's going to bring their friendly canine out. They're reading a book published by the Foundation of Suicide Prevention. It's narrated by a canine puppy, so they'll read to groups of children, interact to children every 30 minutes, along with the Fed County Board of Education Counselors. Now, the other side was face painting, bubble blowing. We just have a lot of activities to try to draw people in. Wanted to make everybody aware here today. It's going to be spread out throughout this fundraiser as well that I don't know how many of you are aware. I was not, but just this past year, West Virginia legislation, and it was, it was, you know, brought forth by the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention. 911 is a medical emergency number. 988 is the suicide hotline. 988 is a mental health suicide medical emergency is the emergency. 911 medical, 988 mental health emergency. Use it, text it, call it, spread the word. September 30th, Willing for Hope. And do we have a place for a banner across? I get my banner Thursday. We place the banner for Willing Hope across the bridge. Sure. I'll bring that to you Thursday.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Hazlett.
Good evening, Council. Um, I wanted to speak against raising sewer rates. I know that we haven't raised them for years. We should have raised them for years. That does fall on the past administration. Never brought up before council, should have been gradually increased over the years. I understand that. Understand now with the costs of equipment, um, materials, that everything is raised. The Menden project, which should have been done four years ago, the phase two of that project should have been completed before COVID hit. Now look what you're going to pay for materials to do that project. Um, I just want all y'all to sit and think. Have you looked at all the financials? Studied the numbers, seen where you could trim the fat, trim the excess, and raise the rates no more than needed to cover your costs. I know in the last meeting, you talked about raising it 2%, and that would bring us into compliance with what we needed. And then another raise in April, um, and then another, I guess, the other 20% after you finish this other project that we got planned. Um, I'd like to see it as cheaply done as possible. Sanitary Board is not existing to make profit. Understand, you need to cover your costs. Understand that. I'd like to keep it as low as possible. Another question that I have, I've never been able to understand it. I never asked the question. I know, and I'm not busting you chops, Demeter, um, that as the head of the sanitary board, I know you draw, get a salary from the sanitary board as well at your city manager's position. To me, that's always been double dipping. If I was a lawyer and I had two clients, and I worked 40 hours a week, do I bill both of those clients 40 hours worth of work, or do I bill them 20 hours apiece? I don't know what that amount is that you get. I don't know. But I think that needs to be looked at as well. We need to trim costs where we can. And please, all of us here, as the mayor said, it's paying us out of our pockets. If you want people to stay here, live here, be successful, we need to trim what we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazlett. Jim Ayers.
How you doing? Uh, first thing, I've heard people come to the last couple meetings complaining. I mean, they got to give this city council a chance. Y'all were all just pointing. Most of y'all, there's some leftovers. It's come to light the sewer that was run out to the golf course for the 40 homes, 40 lots that are out there. There's only four homes built out there, which means all that line that was run out there is not generating money. We also run line out to the trailer court out off Almond Street that was owned by Keith Lester. I understand this was done a while ago, but we need to look into why this was done at the taxpayers' expense.
I mean, I know it ain't your fault. Some people were here during that. But what, why are we bearing the cost of that? And also, it's been brought to my attention, the salary some of the people are making in Oak Hill. We got people making six figures in Oak Hill. More than people that are making in Clarksburg in bigger cities. I mean, is that right? Does city council have the right to change that, look at that? This is a small town and I don't think the taxpayers. I mean, it's getting smaller and smaller, the tax base. And like Steve said, we got to watch where we're spending our money and how we're spending. Everybody deserves to make a good wage. I understand that. But when we're paying people more than City of Clarksburg, it's three times our size. Something's not right. So I wish council would put your heads together and look at some of this and try to figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. That'll end there. Go ahead. Okay.
Don't want to waste. Also, back to the sewer. Um, the city should go after the county commission. We, we adopted Arbuckle when we brought Menden in. But that, that cost should be bearred by the city council who set that sewer system up. The taxpayers of Oak Hill should not pay that. Somehow we can go back to the county commission and they should have funding to help us with this project, which would ease the burden on all local citizens. So when user getting ready to vote, I hope you will explore that as an option also. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll close out this session or citizens' comments. We will move into our public hearing about the sewer rates increase. We have joining us on Skype, Michael Griffith.
Oh, also Dixie Kellam Myers on there. Michael has to leave at six. The people that signed up for the public comment, um, I believe have already spoken. Is there anyone else that would like to speak as part of this public hearing?
Mayor, I, if I could, and I hate to take the time, but if I could address the correspondence that we received and, uh, Mr. Hazlitt, if, if you would like to answer some questions about the letter that you signed, you're welcome to stand at the podium. Well, I'd, I'd like for the, your response to be heard.
Yes, sir.
Council received a, um, a letter with, with your signature and, uh, several others, Mr. Bickford, David Perry, Danny Wright. And I believe the other signature was Mike Fox. Is that correct or can you verify that?
I believe Mike Fox signed it as well as David Perry.
Okay. Well, let me ask you, first of all, if you're familiar with the content of the letter and feel comfortable answering a few questions about it.
I will try to answer.
Okay. Paragraph number one talks about, we heard it read a minute ago, talks about a debacle, unwise decisions during the period of 2014 to 2017. And no adjustments or reviews until August of 2023. Do you mean rate increase when you say rate adjust, or when you say adjustment? Does that mean rate increase?
That's the way I understand the letter, yes.
Um, are you aware of the last rate increase implemented by the Oak Hill Sanitary Board, when that was?
I am not, sir.
Okay. That was implemented in 2019. Two years past the 2017 date that it stated that there has been no adjustment or review. So two years after that, there was a, a rate increase. And do you think that? And I, I think you may have mentioned just during your comment that, um, do you believe there's been a high rate of inflation in the four years since the rate increase?
Since COVID, yes, sir. I do believe that.
Okay. Were you asked along with the rest of the former council by the city manager to review the sewer rates and possibly consider a rate increase during your term of council, the last term?
At the very end, yes, sir. They, they were bringing it up in June.
And paragraph number two speaks about the annexation of Menden acquisition, the Arbuckle PSD and goes on and says, not to mention a sweetheart deal with Beaver Land Company.
I'm not aware of any of those, the, the details of a sweetheart deal.
Okay. Do you know what, where that was even?
It was told to me that it was the area behind the country club, the new housing development.
Okay. That began in about 2007, possibly 2008. That predates, I, I wasn't here when that happened. So and, and usually the way that happens with, uh, Mr. Ayers brought that up too, as a matter of fact. Yeah. Usually the way that works, I wasn't here, so I can't say this. I was, the project was ending when I was here, but it started. Tom Oxley was here, but it, the project ended while I was here. And you. Okay. I'll talk about Keith Lester too in a minute. The, usually the way it works with the subdivision, I wasn't involved in the Beaver situation to begin with. The developer runs the sewer lines. Okay. Okay. And then the Oak Hill Sanitary Board charges the sewer rate to the customers that are hooked up after they've run the, the line. Now, Keith Lester, and I, I'm sorry to get off course here, Mr. Hazlitt, with you, but Keith Lester ran his own sewer line, put in his own pump station and connected it to a horse main line of the Oak Hill Sanitary Board. Yes. Um, so anyway, um, and, uh, Mr. Hazlitt, that's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay. Well, we're going to close this session. Now we're going to move along to our unfinished business. Number one, tonight, consider, consideration to approve an ordinance setting forth the rates, fees and charges for service customers of the sewer system of the city of Oak Hill, West Virginia. This is the second reading.
Jonathan Carpenter's here from Thrasher. He's, um, Thrasher's engineer on the project that we're um, going to be starting with once this is completed. If anybody has questions for him. Can John come to the podium and speak a moment?
Jonathan, will you?
To me, th- this may not be the time to ask, but I just want to clarify in this rate increase, that surcharge, just so some of the people know, is being taken away for the Arbuckle people.
Yes, the, the surcharge for the Arbuckle customers will be ending with the first rate increase.
Okay.
Jonathan?
Yes, ma'am.
In our last meeting, you went over why we were showing them the red. Could you explain that one more time?
That was Jim Kelch. I'm sorry.
Jim Kelch, I'm sorry. Do you have that information?
I don't have it. I don't have that information.
Dixie, are you still on there, Dixie?
Yes, I'm still here.
She is wondering, um, council member Janie is asking why. Well, I can explain that also. Uh, our expenses were more than our income.
But didn't we have to have so much money? I can't remember how Mr. Kelch.
We have to have a, a working capital reserve account. That's part of the rates that, that we have to have. We have to have, um, 115% coverage of our debt, which our revenues have to be 115% to, or over our debt amount that we're, the payments that we're making. We have not met that. I think that we were like at 80% or something.
So wasn't necessarily because of operations that we ran short.
Well, a lot of it is because of the expenses that we've had. I mean, the extra expenses, I think you all got a copy of how much the prices have increased since COVID. Um, all the supplies, we did some extra projects that needed to be done. It was a good time to do them. We've put a lot of pipe in the ground over the past couple of years. We have, um, employees that are able to do that and we don't have to bid it out. We don't have to hire a contractor. So.
So we can do our in-house.
We have our own equipment and our, and the ability to do that work on some small projects.
Thank you.
And, and to that end, um, we, we've seen the benefit of that firsthand with Kyle Obz's group with the sanitary board. Uh, they, they located a significant source of inflow into the sewer system in the Menden area here recently, which drastically reduced the amount of flow that we were seeing, that we were seeing at the Menden wastewater treatment plant. Um, which lower the flow, you have less power usage. There's a benefit of some lower operation and maintenance costs without getting that flow. And Kyle, that's not the only area. They're identifying areas throughout the collection system where there are problems and addressing them with their sources. And through a lot of the clients that I have, uh, you guys are fortunate to have folks on staff that are able to do that and not have to go out and get that contracted. But to get to Demeter's point as well, since COVID and, um, even post-COVID, the price of pipe went, it skyrocketed and then it also became an availability issue. Um, and when, um, and I do know that when there were opportunities to buy pipe, sanitary board did capitalize on when they could get some pipe to have it on hand, they, if it was located, they bought it. Because at that time, um, I know with the projects, I had some projects, uh, where we might be waiting three and four months for material to get started to dig. So it's been, uh, it's been an issue throughout water and wastewater industry, um, just with the sheer availability of material and certainly the pricing of just about everything, not only on the piping side, but certainly on electrical components as well.
Thank you.
And, and just, I, I know part of that, uh, you know, part of with the rate increases about, um, you know, going level or what the sanitary board's explaining. And I get to Mr. Thomas's question about what the project itself, uh, involves. Um, as, as it, as was talked about earlier, the Oak Hill Sanitary Board did um, take over the Arbuckle Public Service District and, uh, did perform a very large, uh, sanitary sewer improvements project with, um, corrections throughout the, the collection system and improvements to both of the wastewater treatment plants as well as decommissioning the Arbuckle Public Service District's wastewater treatment plant and installing a pump station and pumping that flow to the Menden wastewater plant. So that was all part of phase one. Included in that phase one was also some, uh, some money to move forward with the phase two, which is the project that's associated with, partially with this, uh, rate increase. And that is a project to address the, uh, collection system in the Menden area, which would be, uh, replacing and repairing all the manholes throughout the collection system. Um, upgrading pump stations in the area, actually eliminating one of them. Um, and additionally, the area up on Terry Avenue, which currently flows down the rock face and right onto Menden Road is actually going to be rerouted to a section within Oak Hill, which should help alleviate some of the problems with all that flow that's heading down Menden Road into the heart of Menden. Um, just rerouting it to go through a different set of the collection system. So as part of that, uh, the sanitary board has obtained, um, a significant amount of grant money to pay for this project, uh, specifically a grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission for $1.25 million. Uh, a grant from the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection, abandoned mine lands program for $1,500,000. A million dollar debt forgiveness loan, which is a grant from the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection. A half a million, um, dollar grant from the West Virginia Infrastructure and Jobs Development Council and a low interest loan, uh, in the amount of, I think it's about $2.7 million uh, at an interest rate of 0.25% for a term of 40 years. So. There's no way that's uh, the 25 million consisted of five contracts. It was the upgrade of the Menden wastewater treatment plant, the upgrade to the Route 61 wastewater treatment plant, the improvements and the, uh, the improvements to the sanitary sewer system in town of Oak Hill. Uh, another contract was to run the line from the Arbuckle wastewater treatment plant all the way to the Menden wastewater treatment plant. And then the, um, the new pump station at the Arbuckle wastewater treatment plant. Those five contracts totaled to $25 million.
If Tyler, if you'll put that back down to the rate, rates, I can go over those. Um, in the first step, we're still on the tiered rate that we're on now, declining. Um, a declining rate as your usage goes up. So the first 2,000 gallons will be $17.30 per 1,000. The next 38 gallons is $15.10 per 1,000 and over 40,000, it's $13.70 per 1,000. If, um, you have an equivalent usage of 4,000 gallons, your bill would be $16.20, $69.20 a month and the minimum charge is $34.60 per month. In the next step, the first 2,000 gallons will be $18.90. Um, the, the next $38,017.90 and all over 40,000, $17.10. The $4,000, uh, if you, a 4,000 gallon bill would be $75.60 and the minimum charge would be $34.60. Then step three, that's where the flat late, the flat rate comes in. So each person will pay $21.20 per 1,000 gallons. And it doesn't, if you, it doesn't go down as your gallons go up. Um, and if you use 4,000 gallons, your bill would be 8480 and your minimum bill will be $42.40 a month. Yes. Yes. We have it. You can come into the office and get it tomorrow.
Anything else?
The last step will be at the, upon substantial completion of the project.
So to answer your question, substantial completion on the project would be approximately May of twenty-five. Just to be on the safe side, probably the summer of twenty twenty-five.
The first step will take, goes into effect forty-five days after tonight. Uh, so it probably, we, we will start it with usage after November first. And then after that, the next rate increases in April of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
What was the, uh, the one eighth amount that was supposed to be put in every year as far as the capital was over?
That's the cash working cap.
Right.
Did you hear that, Dixie? Or?
I think he had that figured at three hundred thousand.
No, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
The amount for our cash working capital reserve?
Um, yes, it's about three hundred thousand. At going level, it's like three hundred and six thousand uh, after the project, because it goes up with any increases in operation and maintenance expense, it ends up at about three hundred and twenty-one thousand. And of course, that's a legislative requirement.
And that's one eighth, that's one eighth of the operating and maintenance expenses. Is that correct?
That's correct. On an annual basis.
What is the amount we have now?
Charles. Get your point there. The amount that we have in the account right now.
Yes.
It's, uh, right at two hun- no, a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
But, but this requirement is that you, that you contribute that money into that cash working capital fund every year. Of course, it, it is available for, you know, some of these unusual events that happen, unusual repairs and maintenance and so forth.
No.
What are our current rates?
Hmm.
You'd have to go into code to find those.
It's been in all the information that we've sent. Uh, it's, no.
Is the current rate here on the bulletin board as you go in?
Uh, maybe.
But I would like to answer Mr. Thomas's question as far as reviewing all of our financials. I asked the city manager for the financials and minutes for the entire sanitary board for the last year. Oh, I'm, I thought you asked that. Steve asked that. I'm sorry, Steve. So I, I did ask that and Dmitri provided it to me. It's a lot to review, but as best as I could review all the financials, I can see where it's the cost of supplies that have created the situation we're in now. I mean, I don't make this decision lightly either because it's my sewer rate also that's going up, not just everybody else's, but I'm included in that. So I wanted to educate myself not being an expert in that as much as possible. And from everything I can see, it is the cost of supplies that have taken us where we are right now.
But if you realize, if you looked at your power bill lately, your water bill and every other kind of utility bill, I mean, they've all had increases.
I, I will.
But that, I mean, the, the utilities are never going to decrease. And groceries aren't going to be, about the same groceries week after week and it goes up nine, ten dollars every week. So I mean, we're all in this together.
I, I will tell you this, though, speaking from experience and what I have seen too. They provide a service to the citizens that is exceptional. If you have a sewer leak or something pops up in your yard, they will come out, they will find it. Most of the time they will clear it or repair it. And instead of looking at you and saying, call a plumber, sorry about your luck. They will do that twenty-four, seven. Do an exceptional job at it. I just want to put that plug in there. And so that costs too. That, that kind of drive costs up, but that also saves a lot of people a lot of money in the long run because we're not having to pay as a citizen for a plumber to come and fix this or whatever. They, they take on that. And, and the equipment and stuff, you know, I heard that mentioned, the equipment they've got is, is, is really good stuff to do their jobs. And when you start cutting on equipment expenses and things, you, you would, in the long run, you would drive your cost up because it will make your job harder to do. And then it also throws in a safety factor also. Without good working tools and equipment, it, it, it kind of, you, you got people working with subpar equipment and that can cause, in my opinion, you know, injuries and things like that for them. So those guys out there that do that do an exceptionally well job and the cost is going up on them. And I'm with Krista. We've looked at it a lot.
Anyone else?
All that information is online at our oakhillwv.gov under the ordinances.
Okay. Counsel, we'll need a motion. Anyone to accept this?
I'm sorry, Charles. What did you say?
Well, we have to accept. Sorry, we need to get a motion. I'm sorry.
I couldn't hear you.
We, I'm sure we have to have a motion and accept this reading. So anyone want to start it off? We'll vote.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Anyone want a second?
A second.
Okay, motion is properly moved and second to approve the ordinance setting forth rates, fees and charges to the sewer system. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay. State the reason why.
Yes, you may.
All these, uh, figures we're getting, I think I, I remember somebody said twenty twenty-one, there was a deficit then?
Nah, I can't, I cannot remember. I can look. But I cannot remember if we were in a deficit in twenty-one.
Okay, and, uh, the rate should be reviewed every three years?
The rate should be reviewed almost every year, but if you remember what happened in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we had COVID. So we were being asked not to increase races, rates, not to turn off people's, um, water for not paying their sewer bill. We were asked, people were getting money to pay their sewer bill. So that probably was not the best time to have a rate increase.
And this is the first time I've seen a financial report from the sanitation board.
You can have one anytime you want.
But I thought they were supposed to be, you know, put in the paper, publicized.
No, we don't. We don't publish our financial report. We put it, every year it's about to go in there again before the end of September or the first of October, whenever they can get in the paper. That does go in the paper every year.
Okay, another thing, we won't be penalized for, for these laws that we've broken. You know, such as Senate Bill two thirty-four, saying you must maintain a certain level.
It could show, something could be noted in our audit, but it's not a penalty.
Okay, I'll change my vote.
To, you're changing it to yes?
Thank you, Mr. Smallwood. Moving on to unfinished business number two, the, excuse me, consideration to approve a letter of support for Housed Up Inc. to build a single room occupancy housing project designed to move participants from homelessness to housing. Mr. Burt, you are here. Mr. James Burt will give us a little more information.
We have a PowerPoint. There we go.
Uh, yeah, it's only a few slides. I tried to keep it short and sweet, but my name is James Burt. I'm the founder, president and CEO of Housed Up Incorporated, a five oh one C three nonprofit, uh, here in Fett County, West Virginia, founded to end homelessness through housing and services. And the second slide, what we're, uh, planning to do to combat homelessness in this area is a Fett and Raleigh County single room occupancy permanent supportive housing project. Um, these are just a few examples, but program participants will have their own room, but may have to share living, dining or restroom facilities in one of these various types of ways. But, um, that's just one aspect of it. If you move on to the third slide, thank you. Um, the programming is a Pathways Housing First program. I blew it up a little bit here, but this is an evidence based practice. Um, the pathways modeled to end homelessness, uh, is for people with mental health and substance use disorders. Um, the person that will be looking to fill this position, uh, we would like to be a peer recovery coach or a peer recovery support specialist so they could serve a dual role in helping clients. The housing counselor's, uh, job will be to form a stability plan with clients to find, uh, stability in housing and in income. Uh, if you lose stability in one of those things, you usually lose stability in the other. So those things need to work together. Um, for program participants, the single room occupancy permanent supportive housing project will take care of their basic needs of safety, security, food, water, a place to sleep. The Housing First, uh, Pathways to Housing Programming will help take care of their psychological needs, rekindling relationships with friends or loved ones or starting new ones and giving them a sense of accomplishment as they move forward in the program till they reach a point of self, uh, actualization or self fulfillment, uh, self fulfill fulfillment where they realize they don't need us that much or maybe not even at all, um, for their housing and income stability. Um, and then the last slide here, before we can even do any of this, we have to plan the project. Um, right now, we just found out eleven thirty today that we are receiving fifty thousand dollar, uh, Inspire Planning Grant from Appalachian Regional Commission to plan this project. Um, the three fields that are listed here is the activity, the, uh, cost and our timetable for when, uh, we're trying to meet these deadlines. The feasibility study will help us ensure that the population that we're serving, i- i- if they're disabled, um, we're meeting all ADA requirements to serve that population. If they're victims of domestic violence, minorities, LGBTQ plus, we can learn all that through the feasibility study and, and how many, uh, people will actually want to participate in this program. We're planning on acquiring property through the West Virginia Land Stewardship Corporation's Transfer of Abandoned Property Program, or TAP, is what they like to call it for short, but we have a small set aside for that. We'll also be consulting with Pathways to Housing in Pennsylvania to produce a policies and procedures manual that's in compliance with the Pathways to Housing Program. Uh, Pathways to Housing in Pennsylvania as rural, just like we are here in West Virginia. And they went from housing fifty homeless people a year to housing five hundred with an eighty-five percent housing retention rate after five years. We are interested in our specific outcome of the program being an eighty percent housing retention rate after one year of completion of our program. But as you may well know, most of the program costs will be going to the architect to come up with, uh, design drawings, a statement of probable construction cost and to get started on, uh, the master plan blueprint work and those things. Some of them won't cost any money, but training that will be mandatory for the program is H, uh, HMIS and SPADA training. SPADA is, uh, is an acronym for Service Prioritization Data Assistance Tool. This is an acuity tool to help us measure, uh, the acuity of people that are experiencing homelessness. So that way it's not first come, first served, but the people that actually need help the worst are getting it first. Um, and the HMIS is the Homeless Management Information System. Uh, it's a statewide system to help monitor, um, the cases and it's attached to a national system which is all monitored and training can all be received through the Coalition in Homelessness. We are, uh, looking to secure a letter of support from the Oak Hill City Council. It's not a requirement of the grant, but there will be a feasibility review in the, um, implementation grant that we'll apply for next. And the closer that it looks like we have a feasible project, the more likely we are to get funded. And that is why we are requesting a letter of support from Oak Hill City Council today. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Burt, are you doing any, I noticed, just listening to what you said, um, any of your clients suffer from substance use disorder? Will you be doing anything for those folks?
Yes, and, um, we'll be working with other, uh, assets in the community. And I know there are already, uh, peer recovery coaches and peer recovery support specialists, uh, at the FMRS and places like that. So part of the Pathways to Housing Program is, uh, we broker resources out of the community that already exists. So a lot of things are already here. We don't have to duplicate uh, those programs or, or refund it if we can use what's already here.
Thank you.
Mayor, I may, um, Mr. File, you, I, I know you have some experience with the Fair Housing Act and, and, uh, so does the city of Oak Hill, and I, I believe this would fit the definition of a group home.
What I heard today, I, I would think it does. That's kind of unofficial opinion.
And I, I just wanted to point out, you'd let me know if I'm not saying this right, but the Fair Housing Act does not allow a municipality to, through zoning or any other means to prevent a group home. If, if someone wants to establish a group home virtually any location in the city of Oak Hill, this city council, this city government cannot prevent that. And, uh, we've experienced that with, um, I'm forgetting the name of the home that was in South Hills.
Oxford House.
Oxford House. And also I believe we came across this during the, uh, the group home that, uh, the state of West Virginia operates, uh,
that they built.
The northern edge. I'm sorry. They don't have to endorse it, but they have to allow it.
I think that, uh, if I recall correctly, the Fair, uh, the Fair Housing Act recognizes, uh, substance use disorders of disability and for zoning purposes, those homes are to be seen as single, uh, family housing units.
Right, you cannot zone those out of a residential section. I, I would agree with that.
Do you have a location in mind?
Um, right now, uh, with, with the work that we've been doing with the West Virginia Land Stewardship Corporation on property that's on back taxes, we've been mostly looking in the Scarborough Whipple area and possibly in the Hartwell Heights area. Those seem to be the areas with the most property on the back taxes.
How many, um, if you don't mind me asking, how many people sit on your board?
Five.
And do you guys get administrative fees from the grants that you receive?
No, no, nobody is compensated from any grant.
Any further questions?
Um, and we, uh, also have whistleblower review policies and stuff like that that's available to the public that if anybody perceives any type of wrongdoing or anything like that, um, they can fill that out and turn it into the IRS.
And housed up, housed up, you don't have an example of where your corporation has has created a group home?
No, we are a startup. This is going to be our first project.
Okay.
Um, but we do, um, we do, looking to the future, plan to become a community housing developmental organization through the West Virginia Housing Development Fund to manage home and HTF rental housing units. We are interested in filling the vacancy of the twenty thousand extremely low income rental units that are throughout the state. And having a program like this, we can collect data on the populations that would use that kind of housing. And having a program like this, we can collect data on the populations that would use that kind of housing to make sure that we're building adequate units for the area.
How large is the one you're looking to put in the Scarborough area?
Right now, we are trying to plan something between six to eight units, but that's going to depend on the feasibility study and how many program participants might want to be involved in the program.
So how many people would that house?
It, that would house eight or nine, because a single room occupancy, each one would would house one person. So between six to eight is what we're looking at right now, but. It's going to depend on how many people we know in between Fett and Raleigh County that would participate in the program.
This letter of support, is it something you necessarily need from us right now to be able to continue?
No, no, it is not. So I wouldn't need a decision right today. If you don't even want to make a decision today, that would be fine. Yeah.
Thank you. We will also need a vote to table it, if that's what you guys would like to do.
I'd like to make a motion to table it, so we have time to. Learn more about it, study. I'm not comfortable making a decision tonight.
I'll second it. Mr. Evans, lead me to it.
Motion has been properly moved and seconded to table the letter of support for housed up Inc. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is carried. Moving on, number three, consideration to appoint and reappoint individuals to boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone have a report? You don't have to read it all.
Document Tyler. That the board's commission's committees.
There we go.
Yes, as you'll see, as you go down, starting with the sanitary board. You could go down just a little bit. I've highlighted the red area that shows that that's is to be by be appointed by the mayor. Shall be composed of the mayor or the city manager and two residents of the city appointed by the board. Those that are in green are the ones that have been recommended. The mayor recommended Chuck Miller and Tara Wells to be appointed. And Mr. Buddha and Barney Stan at their term is. July first of twenty twenty five and Barney Stan is term of the project. So you just have to decide. I think we wouldn't be able to. And if you decide. To go ahead and appoint Chuck Miller and Tara Wells. But that's, that's exactly what, as we go down, that's, if you look through all of them, that's. What this city manager and the mayor have recommended and also people that have wanted to be reappointed. You'll see those. Those are all, all the notes in the, at the bottom of each commission and board and committee. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to help you with it. If you go down to the planning commission. Jim Ross and Don Williams. Their term expired on July first of twenty twenty three. They, they requested to be reappointed and then Krista had requested to be appointed, Chris Gill requested to be appointed. And then the mayor has requested that Austin Kimlock, Justin Vargo, and Paula Bailey. Be appointed and then the media was going to request that Ben Love be appointed as the administrative zoning officer. So you would like me to continue, Mayor? Okay, Board of Zoning Appeals. Terry Van Buskirk, he has sent a letter in. I think we've got that in the packet as well. D'Amita talked with former council member Benitez Jackson, and he would like to be appointed. And then the mayor has requested Dan Greerman. Greerman and Roy Lee and Karen Cox to be appointed on that, on the Board of Zoning Appeals. The alternates, Tom Burdette, he has expressed that he would like to be on the, be reappointed. And then the other two alternate positions have never been filled, but the mayor has requested Chris Harvey and Brandy Davis to be appointed. To the alternates for the Board of Zoning Appeals. The building commission. Don Williams has requested to be reappointed and his term expired on July first, twenty twenty three. And Terry Van Buskirk has asked to be on this committee as well. And of course, with this building commission, we have to separate. We can't have too many of one particular party. So that's the reason you see that the D and the R are no party. So. We have to decide who you'd like to be on that committee as well. I wasn't able to reach Barbara Dixon, wasn't, wasn't able to reach her to find out what kind of, what party she was with. Okay, the police civil service commission, they all wanted to be reappointed. The structural inspection board, we have one position available. That was the at wheel member at large. And the mayor had suggested Jim DeBees to be appointed to that position. The recreation committee. Everyone that's. On in block, they wanted to be reappointed. Tara Harmon was appointed in August of twenty twenty one. And the city manager has requested Beth Gardner, Michael Gill, and. Becky Sullivan, David Ruth was recommended by the mayor. And of course, Josh Sappio was requested to be appointed to the recreation committee as the chairman. Okay, we move on to the beautification committee. This is. I believe it's ten members. And everyone that's in block area, they want to be reappointed. And then we have several people that is in green area for Michael Gill, Debbie DeVese, Gail Treadway, Austin Haynes. Cheyenne Willis and Shady Brash and Mike Meadows would like to be considered for one of the ten positions. Okay, the finance committee, Tim Buskas had expressed that he would like to be appointed on the finance committee. Bill Hannabass and Valerie Vaughn was recommended by the city manager to be on that. Okay, the epithiator commission, it's also consists of ten members. They, again, those that are in block have requested to be reappointed. Michael Hicks and Robert Polly, Robert and Margaret Hillerbrand and Randy Hayes.
Mr. Mr. Haynes.
Mr. Haynes.
He's declined. He's. Mr. Haynes has declined. He's going to be busy.
Okay.
It's gonna work.
All right, we can mark him off. Veterans Memorial Commission, Sandy Smith and Mark Kirk have expressed they would like to be reappointed. And then we, and Tom Corr as well, and Raymond Lopez, Crystal Warner, and Austin Haynes was recommended to be appointed on the Veterans Memorial. Commission, Spirit of Oak Hill Award, Sandy Smith and Debbie DeVese, Nancy Harding, Angela Kefner, and Sherri Kidd. Have all been recommended to be appointed and Debbie Bush would like to be reappointed. So that's all of the recommendations and the requests for reappointments.
Thank you.
If I may, I believe that, and Bill, you can tell me if I'm right or not, but state code says anybody that is appointed to the BZA. Cannot be appointed to any other commissions or committees. Pretty sure that's what it says, state code.
I don't know.
Okay.
How's it read in the? In the description of the board? Or you're saying the state code?
Right, right, for the BZA. The BZA is the only one that has any restrictions.
Okay, I'm not familiar with that state code.
You can, we can double check before we appoint people to that. That won't be like that Tim or Terry gentleman that's in Benitez. If they, we appointed them to those, they cannot be appointed to anything else.
Want to break the table? That anyone? We'll just wait. I do have a question about the terms on those. How come all those are not set? Everything I would think should be set term to council, term of council, not just, it's random. We just have random dates. Is there, is that something mandated by the state or our ordinances, or can it be changed to term of council for all of them, all the committees?
Well.
It is mandated by.
It's mandated by our ordinances right now.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Rhonda.
That's okay.
Thank you. You guys want to do a motion to table this for now? Anyone?
Well, we don't have clear clarification. I would ask for it to be tabled.
Well, we do kind of need our planning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. And there are active committees that. We have things coming up.
Which to?
Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission.
Can we pull those out of the mix?
Okay, and that one is which one that's on the screen? That's.
Board of Zoning Appeals.
Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'm almost a hundred percent positive that's in state code, that they cannot serve on any other. People on the BZA cannot be appointed to any other committees or commissions.
You guys opposed to just tabling it for a brief moment, maybe having a, having our workshop that we need to have still and then working it out?
If you look at number three. On the Board of Zoning, under B, it does clearly state that not hold any other elective or appointed office in the city of Oak Hill.
So it's basically saying if you can't be an employee. That was it saying.
Or you can't be, you can't serve on any other.
So like whoever you appoint to this, if we appoint Terry and Benitez, we can't appoint them to any other committees or commissions.
Do you have a preference, Terry, what you want to serve on?
You want to serve on the BZA?
And then also, if you'll see, there's a total number. On the, total members is five, so. And we have three, five, eight people. So you're going to have to make a decision on. Who you, the five that you want.
See, you only have two that are available right now. The other terms don't end until January.
So there's two that needs appointed as well, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Terry and Benitez?
I'm sorry.
Terry and Benitez?
That's.
I'd like to, I'd like to speak Terry and Dan personally, but it's up to you guys.
I move that we appoint Mr. Van Buskirk. And Benitez Jackson to the. Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll second that.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those favor? All those opposed? Motion is carried.
Terry, there's a meeting tomorrow night.
Would you like to go ahead and appoint Chris Harvey and Brandy Davis to the alternates for the Board of Zoning?
That's fine. Who else is on there for the alternates?
Does Chris Harvey live in city limits? Or Brandy? Because this one.
They have Oak Hill addresses.
I'm sure that they have to live in city limits for the BZA.
Yes, under B as well, number one, be residents of the city for at least three years preceding the appointment. So you want to hold off on that?
Are you saying city limits proper or just Oak Hill is? That's fine. Yeah, let's, let's.
Hold off on that.
Off on that one.
Then you wanted to address the building commission?
Planning, the planning commission.
This is, shall consist of seven members. So you have three of the seven already in, still have terms.
I'd like to add Krista, Chris, and Ben Love. That works. Does that work for you guys?
Which one?
For this?
Who'd you say?
Krista, Chris, and Krista Hodges, Chris Gill, Ben Love. If that's okay with you guys. All right.
So that brings six, doesn't it?
Is that six?
Okay.
Sorry.
And Ben Love and then the other three, six?
Let's, that's.
What about Jim and Don? You only need.
Need one more.
If you reappoint Jim and Don.
I'm not sure if Don's interested, though. That's the, that's the thing. Have you talked to him?
I spoke to him and he did confirm that he did.
Then let's do Don. That's fine.
Ben is not a voting.
He's not gonna be able to.
I don't think, no, I don't think, I don't think your zoning officer is a voting member is.
I don't think so either.
So that would just be whoever's in that position, but. Does it say up there who, like, is it? Just trying to see if it had.
No, I'm not really sure.
It doesn't say anything about.
I'm being a straight over, I don't know, first of all, so has a vote. I'm not sure about that.
I'm not either, but I don't. Do you know, Bill?
What?
If, does the administrative, the zoning officer, do they have a vote on that board?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. I think they're just part of the, they just present what's. Happening there.
We go back to the.
But I thought one member must, one has to be a member of council, okay? Oh, no, and one must be a member of the administrative department, so. We don't have anything coming before this commission right away.
Let's hold that one too, then.
We can look.
Yeah, let's table that one too. Can we get a motion to table that, please?
I'll make a motion to table that.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is carried.
Did you table all of them? Is that what? All of them except for the? Okay. What about the rest of them? Are you gonna, are you gonna table everything else? No one on sanitary board needs reappointed right now. Planning Commission, we just.
You don't need anything on that?
If we table them. Can people still that may be interested still reach out, or is that done?
I would think they still could reach out.
Okay.
I move that we table. The rest of the appointments this evening.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion's carried. All right, thank you, folks. We'll move on now to consideration to lean properties demolished by the REAP program.
As you know, or most of you know, we've received a. As you know, or most of you know, we've received a grant to demolish properties under this program. And so I have a question about putting a lien on the properties that we have demolished with the grant money. We've had, people are asking us if we're going to lien their property. It's easier to get a right of entry if we're not going to put a lien on the property. Although we have in the past put liens on all the properties that we have demolished that we have paid for.
But we're getting a grant that pays for it.
We're getting a grant that pays. We have a hundred forty-three thousand dollars. And so we've gotten a grant for that.
How, how many have been demolished with the grant dollars?
Three so far. And they're the ones we just did on bond and on Broadway. No, one's coming on Broadway. That's, that's been bid and ready to go and the other one's on High Street. But we have a couple more that I think that we could tear down if we were not going to put a lien on. One is a property behind Spirit and Truth. There's a building back there. The other one is Oakville School they're working on. They're all working on something. They have plans to try to get that demolished and it's ready. It would be ready for us to go except for getting the SHPO approval. So that, that's why I'm bringing it up if.
Mrs. Johnson, in, in your experience, how many times have we collected lien from a property?
I don't, I can't think of any. I mean, we have had a couple people pay before we placed the lien. But other than that, we're not collecting our liens.
Did you tell me you said Oakville?
Oakville School.
Now, where's that at?
It's the one, or what's it called now? It used to be Oakville School on Lincoln Street.
Does the church own that?
They own that and they're trying to put a community center there, right?
Okay.
Yes, go.
This, the other specifically was one of the first, it was the second building that we've done on an assessment. The original intention of folks for the parish was to put a new roof on this building and try to save it. It is structurally unsound, to the point that it's not even safe for our purpose. So we were able to, through the program that is traveled through the city, to identify this building as structurally unsound. No question about that whatsoever. And now we're able to work with the parishioners, with the folks who have experienced the situation, with Pastor Ken and Eddie Green especially, to work on securing the grant money for the sake of demolition of this building. So we then made this open plan where we then worked with them to build it completely. So that's, this in particular, we really don't. With removing that lien, the property for those parishioners, what allows to go to the next step of the Red and All Valley Foundation towards building a new to the city and all that property.
So this doesn't, this grant would pay for that. We don't have to put a lien on it and they wouldn't have to pay it back. And that would help them and everybody else do everything that they need to do.
Yes, that's why.
Because we don't have any money out and it's not like the city's paying to have this tore down.
Right.
It's a grant, right?
It's a grant, yes. And they, and the grant, DP does not care if we, there's no requirement for us to place a lien on the property. I just need councils blessing on that.
I, I'm for not placing a lien.
Is that your motion?
Yes, I'll motion that.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Moving on to number five, consideration to approve zoning officer appointment.
This is on the agenda because Mr. Fowell received a letter asking him to look into the fact of whether this was a council appointment or a city manager appointment. So I have already appointed a zoning officer. So I didn't want anything to be left undone and make sure that none of his actions would be, could be questioned. So I haven't talked to Mr. Fowell. I don't know what his, what his take on it was or what his take on it is.
Well, you have an ordinance that appears to make it an appointment by council. I believe it would be appropriate for the media to make a recommendation. Council can act on that, but I think it is council that has the final, final say on that. Mr. Hannah Bass, is that how it's been in the past?
We never, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I was, I was wanting to weigh in on this pretty heavily tonight. I, I, I looked into it and we got that letter and an email also. Actually, some of us did. The mayor didn't get it. The city manager didn't get it. Not all the council members got it, but we got an email with that same letter that was sent to you in there. And, and my understanding and looking into it, I went back in the past couple council terms, back twenty nineteen and twenty fifteen. That was, it was stated in that letter that the current council has been, I'm just going to put it on here in there, that the current council has been derelict in its duties by not approving the zoning officer stated per city code. And that zoning officer is in the ordinances there. And it says this language was placed in the ordinance in nineteen seventy-seven when the position was created. He states that under the previous councils, this was done when the appointments for the city manager, clerk and police chief are made as a matter of thoroughness. He states that this council did not appoint a zoning officer, so we are left without a legal appointed officer by council, not following Oak Hill's municipal code. So I decided to look into it pretty deep. And going back to the August twelfth, twenty nineteen minutes, every position was appointed six oh unanimous. And the, that was not one of them. It was the city manager, the treasurer, like normal. The, that was not one of them. If you go back to July thirteenth, twenty fifteen, all the other appointments were made in there. That was not one of them that had been appointed in there. So I don't know anything about any farther back than that. But it, according to the minutes, it is not being done since twenty fifteen. Whether, you know, they did it or not, I, to me, I don't think the council's been derelict in those duties in that. One is our zoning, current zoning officer hasn't left yet. And the other thing is it said this was an egregious oversight that we supply here. And unless I'm wrong, and I very well could be, and if so, I would gladly accept correction. But when you look at the charter and the ordinance and the position that we're discussing, I feel like this is covered by the charter and not the ordinance. And because council can set a repeal ordinances at any time and the charter you can't. That's something that has to be voted on. This position isn't one that's listed in the charter that the council approves nowhere. So my question, if it's one of those positions, then wouldn't the charter trump the ordinance? And it'd be the sole decision of the city manager? And wouldn't this mean that the city manager's decision to place those duties, you know, with, with someone be under their scope of duties? Just like all the rest of the departments and the positions that were not listed in the charter? And the reason why I say that is I went to the charter in section four. And the charter in section four, under form of government, about halfway down through the paragraph, it says the city manager who shall be administrative authority of the city and who shall execute the laws and administer the government of the city. All powers of the city shall be exercised in the manner provided by this charter. So that, that states that we are a, first of all, we are a city manager strong, former government, not council. Then in section eleven, under the charter, it says councils not to interfere with the appointments or removals. Neither the council nor any of its members shall direct or request the appointment of any person to or his removal from office by the city manager. Then if you go to section twelve, it says the city manager shall be the chief executive officer and the head of the admission branch of the city government. He shall be responsible to the council for the proper, efficient administration of all affairs of the city. And to that end, subject to the provision of thus, charter shall have the power, shall be required to appoint. And when deemed necessary or advisable, remove all officers and employees of the city. So then my last one here is sixteen, under administration, about halfway down, the city manager shall appoint, subject to the confirmation there by the council, the head of each department, except the police department. So that's just saying that the city, the city manager points, or the council does the head. So it is, it's my opinion, and like I said, this is my opinion, that the ordinance was enacted in nineteen seventy-seven with maybe little or no regard to the charter. And that, in my opinion, it is of no force and effect and probably should be repealed and abolished by council and rewritten to state that that's the city manager's position to do that in because it's not listed nowhere else in the charter. And if I'm wrong, Mr. Fowell, please, I will gladly apologize and accept correction on this.
Okay. No, that, that's well done. And I have, I have here the outline of the same documents you read. I don't disagree, I guess, to, to simplify for tonight. I think the city manager should certainly be the one that appoints or, in instance, just to make sure there's no dispute and nominate and have council affirm. But I don't, that's not a hundred percent required. If, if there's any, any contest as to whether the individual is being considered, it's going to be selected, then we can go in and do a much more formal legal opinion. But I think it is somebody that needs to be recommended by the city manager. City manager obviously works with that individual very closely. And I think, as you stated, there is an ordinance, seven five seventy-seven is when it was adopted. Why it was adopted then and what the thinking was, we have no way of knowing. It can certainly be repealed. That's, it's takes another action, another ordinance, basically by council to do so. If you have an ordinance that's been adopted since your charter was put in place, that is in, in violation of your charter, it really should be removed from the book so that there's no question as to who has what power. So of course you have those two here, you have the charter and you have the ordinance. I think it'd be very appropriate, at least at the next meeting, if not before, to, to have an ordinance prepared to, to rescind that particular ordinance. It's going to take an action of council to send that. As it stated, I don't know why, I don't know the history as to why there is an ordinance in place that appoints, or states that council appoints the zoning officer. We do have conflict because we do have the ordinance, we do have the charter. Charter would trump. Certainly should trump the ordinance. So we have both of those. If you're determined to appoint, or if you need, which I assume you do, to have someone put into that position at this time, not wait, not wait till the next meeting of council. I think we can certainly go on what the charter says. I'm comfortable that we can defend that if somebody challenges it. Because that's what, that's what the charter states and that does trump an ordinance. Question is why? I don't know what the thinking was when that ordinance was put into place.
The current zoning officer or Mr. Harding that's getting ready to resign, he has, we, we've asked him to extend his term because of the BZA meeting that's tomorrow night so that he could guide Ben through it. But he's the only zoning officer that we've had and the city manager at the time appointed him as council did not appoint him. It was the city manager that appointed him. Except the zoning, the person that handled zoning before that was the city manager. So that was Tom Oxley and he asked Gary to start doing that job.
That answer your, your question, you did? Would anyone like to make a motion to consider the approval of zoning officer appointment?
If, I think, and of course, I'm, I'm open for any other discussion, but I think it appears that it's leaning towards the, the charter and and I would say that I'll make a motion that we'll table this indefinitely. It's not our decision to make.
It's the city manager's position to appoint that, hire that zoning per the charter.
Per the charter.
I'll second that.
Motion's been, excuse me, properly moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So how do we get it where council, that it's not enough, that it's not a conflict or a question? How do we get that?
You don't have to change the ordinance.
In the ordinance and then in the, in the meantime, if somebody wants to make a legal challenge.
Charter backs you up.
They, they can, I mean.
But just going forward, how to remedy that?
We can, that, where the ordinance, that specific ordinance that says that, we repeal that one and create in there under zoning. All you have to, in my opinion, you just put in there that, that zoning officer position will be filled by the city manager or the charter.
So do we need a special meeting for that, Mr. Fowell? Or? Okay. Okay.
Wouldn't you have to have two readings because you're rescinding something, have to have two readings? Consideration to rescind and then follow up on the second.
I'm going to look into that. That's not something that's done very often. Make sure it's, it may take two readings to that. I'll get back with you on that.
Thank you.
We can have that on the agenda for the next council meeting if you all would like to have that on there.
Yeah. All right. Can we now get a motion to table that until the next, next council meeting? You want to table that till the next council meeting and then we go?
Would it spend on the agenda?
Put it on the agenda, okay.
We just have to vote on the motion that's been.
All right. All those in favor? Those opposed?
That would be me.
Okay. Thank you, the eyes have it. Next is the consideration to appoint attorney West Tony as our city prosecutor.
The selection committee for that reviewed the resumes. We had received three resumes and it was Bill Fowell and myself, Chief Wisman and Deputy Chief, whatever his name is, Prince. And we've selected West Tony to be the city prosecutor. So that is, that is an appointment of council, I guess. That, that's not anywhere in our ordinance.
Maybe we have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation to appoint West Tony.
Can we get a second? Thank you. Motion's been made, properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you.
And Wes is in the back, on the back row. So welcome aboard.
Hi, Wes.
Moving on to number seven, consideration to annex Greentown Loop property. This is the second reading. I'm taking that's the property with the sign where it's going up now.
Where the sign's going up. So that's, that is property where the sign is. We have a deed to the property. It was never annexed. So we just want to finish that so that it's in city limits and we'll have a nice sign there. And.
A welcome sign?
A welcome sign, yeah. A welcome sign, yes.
I want to make that motion because I've been asking for a long time. So I wish to make that consideration to annex that property of the Greentown Loop.
Second that.
Thank you.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to number eight. Consideration to improve the land and to approve the land and water conservation fund. Application for City Park Playground with a fifty percent match.
And we'll turn that over to Sam Rich from Thrasher. He has been working on our park project. But this is for the playground, not the park.
Thank you, Demita. I'll be brief. I just wanted to kind of give you guys an update real quick on City Park. So construction started on the renovation project that you guys have approved the bid on that started last week. So no, Mr. Kirk's crew did a great job on the demolition work, getting all that ready for the contractor to move in. So you'll start to see some real progress there very quickly. They'll be starting to form up the, the block buildings, concession stand and dugouts here pretty soon. So I just wanted to give a quick update on that. What I wanted to talk about tonight is the playground area specifically, which was not a huge area of focus in the phase one contract that was awarded to Veritas. There was some minor improvements that were included in that bid package that we are, you know, at a point of considering removing from the contract. Because we have an opportunity to possibly use that money instead towards some local match for a federal grant program. So the grant program I'm just bringing to your attention tonight is the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is a federal grant program that's administered federal money that's administered through state. So the Department of Commerce at the state of West Virginia administers this program, receives that applications every year. And they award different amounts of projects every year because it's a very competitive and difficult application. This is not a two-page application with some basic information. It's, it's a very complex application that requires detailed budgets, environmental, shipo correspondence. It requires resolution from, from this body, which is why we're, we're here tonight to talk to you about kind of what the opportunities are. So there are different tiers of that application that they have kind of outlined. The more competitive grants where they're only going to award a couple are for $500,000 ask. And then they have kind of another tier that's between two and $400,000 where they'll, they'll award probably a little bit more if they get good applications. And then there's kind of a smaller tier where it's $100,000 or less. Which basically just, you know, so if we ask for this grant source for $200,000, that means there's got to be $200,000 in local funding, which gives you a total project of $400,000. Some of the ideas that we had identified in the master planning process and some of the feedback we had gotten from the community on improvements that needed to happen to City Park revolved around improvements to, and Tyler, if you can pull up that idea board. It basically identified a need for improvements to accessibility in the park, better surfacing and shade. So I'm just kind of put this together to demonstrate to you all some of the things that we can look at. This is from a manufacturer that produces this type of equipment. And we're trying to enhance the playground that we have now to add some accessible playground equipment that would just be interacted for those of all abilities, provide some sensory elements. So we have several pieces of equipment that are there now that are in good working condition and there's no reason to tear them out. So we're not talking about tearing all that equipment out and replacing it with a bunch of brand new expensive equipment. We want to enhance what's there now, add some pieces of equipment and increase some accessibility to the playground. Right now, everything's kind of dirt and pea gravel. As far as surfacing goes, there, there is a walkway that comes from a parking space and then the main walkway that comes to that area. But the accessibility kind of ends at the end of that sidewalk and just dumps you out into the playground area. What we're wanting to do is add some pathways that would go to some of the accessible playground equipment. And then you can see in the bottom right picture, some of the kind of green areas that are, and orange areas that are on that surface. That's what's called a poured-in-place rubber surface that you can put around the base of some of this equipment that is just kind of a flat cushioned surface that, that has fall protection rating. But you can, you know, roll across it in a wheelchair or walk across it. If somebody that has disabilities can still walk, but you know, can walk across it more easily than a material like a mulch or gravel that, that kind of has divots and sinks in. You can see some of the different equipment here that, you know, some of it can be themed for a specific area. You could come up with something that's specific to Oak Hill. You have equipment that you can actually roll a wheelchair into, and this, this particular one's called a rocker panel, and it, it will rock back and forth. There's different types of swing equipment. I've seen him recently, there was a renovation done across from King Tut and Beckley, and they actually have a swing that, you know, a toddler can sit in in front and you can see it there in that bottom left picture, and then somebody can actually sit behind them and swing. So, you know, it's, it's kind of a dual operational piece of equipment with interactive for those with disabilities. The other thing that was really big was shade. Right now, there's, there's no big canopy tree coverage down there, but we have the opportunity to add some of these shade sales over top of some picnic tables or benches, kind of on the exterior of the playground area to try to not only create a pop of color and some more aesthetic interest down there, but something functional, some sort of a shaded seating area. And I think that will play very well for smaller covered seating areas and then in other phases of funding, what we're going to try to accomplish are a couple more picnic shelters in that area where the T-ball field is currently. So, you know, we're, we're kind of working on a budget. We're working on an application. They're due in November, so we have another council meeting before this application would be submitted, where we would ask for the formal resolution. I think kind of what we wanted to, and Tyler, Demita, you all correct me if I'm saying anything you feel differently about, but I think kind of what we're trying to get to tonight is what you all would be willing to put in towards local funds for this application so that we can develop a scope and a budget for the project to submit a competitive application. So certainly when I answer questions, and Demita, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that as far as kind of what we've been working on.
No. I think this is a, we have a lot of use of that playground area. There's always a lot of children there. I think it'd be great to add some accessible pieces of equipment. Mr. Smallwood's been really concerned with that in the past. So, and while he's still concerned about it. So I believe that I put in an email that I sent you that we have a, about 700,000 of unobligated ARPA funds left. So that would be the money that I would propose that you pick an amount from that that you would like to commit to this project if you want to do that.
Sam? Now, were the gravel and dirt not, all that would be replaced, like under the swings, everything?
It would be replaced, but it wouldn't all be poured-in-place surfacing. So that, that poured-in-place rubber that I'm talking about, we would put around the new accessible equipment. We were kind of advised by the playground manufacturer that sells this stuff. You don't want to put that poured-in-place rubber around any older equipment because the lifespan of that rubber will outlive whatever equipment's in place. So in, in light of trying to enhance what we have there that's functioning, we would want to add some accessible areas of the playground with some new equipment and put rubber underneath of that. Everything else we would recommend upgrading to appropriate engineered wood fiber mulch. And then put some edging around and improve the drainage in the playground. But that, this rubber is like $30 a square foot installed. It's, it's an expensive surfacing, but it, it's really nice and has, has a nice lifespan and
But you can improve the conditions
Yes.
of what's currently down there.
And I would want to make that part of this application to, to do the whole resurfacing of that whole playground, but obviously do poured-in-place rubber underneath anything that's new.
Thank you.
And a sidewalk that lead you from a parking area to this.
Yes.
So.
Do you, do you have a figure in, in mind, Sam, what it would take?
Uh, very customizable. Just depends on what we do. I had put together a, a budget for a meeting that we had last week that I arrived at $500,000, but that included some paving. That included a pretty large shade cell structure. And I think, you know, it had some allowances for the poured-in-place rubbers and playground equipment. We think we can do a smaller project. We, we don't think that it has to be $500,000 project. Kind of the, the number that we all kind of came to in our head was, you know, a $400,000 project, so 200 and, and local match. That's but that's kind of up to this group. And certainly we can put in smaller applications, we can put in larger applications. I think we just need to know what this group feels comfortable with, what we need to work for, and hopefully get together a really competitive and attractive application. Just as a point of reference, they only awarded five projects grants in 2022. A big theme with all of them is accessibility. There were two pool projects that were making accessible improvements that were awarded, one in Mannington and one in Parkersburg. There was also a elevated board lock and parking area in Canane Valley at the state park that received an award. So things with accessibility are very attractive to this funding agency.
And part of the requirement of that grant application is that we have we, where we can show them a budget with that money dedicated to this project. So whatever you approve, we would have to do a budget revision next month so that I could move the money from the ARPA funds into our general fund and designate it for that project.
And the the money was earmarked, the ARPA funding was earmarked for outdoor recreation, drainage and sidewalk.
Yes.
Yeah, for parks and sidewalks and drainage. So so it's not like this is the nature decision that, that it's been talked about and designated as that.
Up on the screen right now, Tyler's pulled up the actual, I, I was doing that from memory. He's, he's got the actual numbers there of that. This is what their best case scenario outcome is. If they don't get enough competitive grant applications, they won't award all the money from this cycle, or they'll give certain projects more money. As an example, I mean, I, I can't tell you how difficult this particular grant application can be. They're very picky about what they want it to be. It takes time to put together and they'll get applications that they'll just simply say, this, this doesn't meet our requirements. So you're not getting your money. So they may end up, instead of awarding two, three, seven and five projects, they may only, like they did last year, give a total of five awards. So.
Could we consider other parks as well with this? Or we just have to put it on one park?
No. There's nothing in the application that it would be specific to one property. They do have they do place a requirement that the covenants for the property, which I believe City Park already has covenants that it has to remain as a recreational property, but you have to basically add to the deed that it can never not be used for recreational use because you're putting federal money into it. So we would need to evaluate each particular property to make sure there's no conflicts with something like that. But as an example, you may have a playground at another city-owned park where you want to do something similar to this, and maybe you spend the money in more than one location. And that's where I think we'll have to get really creative on exactly, you know, what improvements we're going to make and you know, I, I, the budget I put together was 500,000 just for City Park, but I, I don't feel that everything I had in that initial budget has to be done to make a drastic improvement.
Thank you, Sam. Well, can we get a motion to?
Let me throw out a figure just to, just to get started. What about if, if our match was $150,000, it would be, that would be a total of a $300,000 project? I mean, and I'm, I'm just throwing it out there to start the discussion.
We actually talked about that too, because there are seven projects awarded in that.
If we, if our, if we're going to look at other parks, should we not try to match a little bit more if we're going to try to see what other parks we can do this at? How often do they award this grant, Sam? Is this a yearly grant? Okay, so it's not like
we couldn't come back to the table again.
These applications are due.
They're due in November, and you won't apply until next November unless they some, some years they've opened up another cycle. Like if they don't get enough good applications in November, you might have another round that's due in June or July. So and they give you comments, like if you're not selected for the funds, they'll give you comments on what you could improve on or do differently. But I would if you're going to do more than just City Park, I would encourage you to, to think about being at that. You want to be in that three-project grant range, in my opinion, that 150 to 200, whether you're considering 200 in match or 150 in match. You're still in that same tier where it's a max total of $400,000 project. But again, that's, and the other thing I guess about this money, you know, the money will get allocated to be local match. If you're not awarded the grant, guys can repurpose that money for something else, or you can continue to hold on to it and then apply for another round the following year. They just won't they won't just take a letter from you that says we'll have the local match if we're awarded the funds. They, they want to see that it's been committed and there's been a resolution by this body.
You feel pretty good about, about like the chance where, especially when you're talking about the accessibility and where we're lacking in that area that I, like, you know, you got a better-than-average chance of getting selected for this or
I think
just no idea.
I, I think, well, it's hard for me to just be really sure about it, but here's one thing I think you guys have going for you is from a cultural and environmental resources standpoint, we're modifying property that's been previously disturbed and already developed. We're just making small improvements. We're not cutting down trees. We're not putting anything in a river or lake or stream, you know, we're from a standpoint of environmental compliance, this is, this is an easy one. And they're not complicated construction projects like this pool's. Pools are challenging projects. So I, I feel like this is a really worthwhile opportunity and you know, can't guarantee you guys are going to get the money, but I think you got a good shot with what we're talking about.
What number did you throw out, Bill? 150?
Yeah. She asked what number you threw out.
One, one fifty, match.
Maybe that's what we should start with. Because we can always go back and reapply for the grant later after we finish one park.
I, I think we're also talking about, you know, congressional directed spending requests, if they're going to come back around next year. That's another funding source this kind of working group is talking about. This is just an opportunity we don't want to miss this year.
Right.
But, you know, you can get money through the HUD programs with the congressional directed spending requests and there's zero match. So that's another, that's another way maybe to make improvements at multiple park properties. So just to
In your opinion, the 150, is that enough or should it be a little higher?
We can, we can build a scope to whatever money is made available. You know, $50,000, really, it's $100,000 when you think about the 50/50 component there. I mean, it'll make a significant difference in what we're able to do, but if you guys are comfortable with that 150 number, then it's our job to come up with something that's meaningful that we can do for that amount.
I just don't want us to be short-changed at the park while we have an opportunity.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand that.
I mean, because once you get in there and you do that, it's there.
Yep. You know, the awards last year, the highest one was 800,000. The second one was 600,000, and then it went, it dropped drastically. There was a couple just smaller projects they awarded after that. I, I think no matter what you do, I wouldn't, I wouldn't encourage you to go higher than that $200,000 match to just keep it in that second tier. I think it'll make it more competitive. If they get a bunch of big applications and they're looking for some smaller projects to award as well, I, I think that'll be a good sweet spot to be in.
Can we bump that up just a tad?
I'm sorry.
Can we bump your original?
That's fine, but that bumps it out of the tier that Sam just said was the, was the sweet spot.
I didn't hear what, what did she say?
She said, can we bump it up some?
Like if we did 175? Is that too much?
No.
Does that throw it out of that sweet spot, though? You said that if they want to look at smaller? Does that throw it out of that sweet spot though? You said that if they want to look at smaller grants, smaller projects, I mean.
No, no, as long as you don't go over 200, you'll, you'll be fine.
Okay.
Ms. Rizer, do you have a question?
The, where I was like the funding there, just the, so I would imagine the price and the amount she placed on it, like just a 30,000, 50,000, 70,000, you know, but it has the decision been made with this grant money or this money is appropriated for this city park or hill or is it going to be appropriated to other parks? Because that's going to make a difference as well. Cause then you're taking from one park, you go to add a little tier and it's not all distributed to, you know, Hill City Park and it's going to have to be between other parks. Is this going to be them first, maybe it's going to be first later or as it's been discussed here, really use this money and spread it out to several parks. So that was kind of like, I was unclear about what the money was appropriated for, was appropriated to this park and what was.
It was, there was no amounts tied to any of it. It was just outdoor recreation, drainage and sidewalks. Yes.
And that's, I mean, it's a good point. There are several, the city of Oak Hill has a lot of parks. City Park, the Russell Lee Matthew Park at Harlem Heights, the, the Dog Park, the, and the largest park, of course, is Needles Eye Park.
We've been putting money.
Collins Park, I love Collins Park.
Same. And then next to the park, this park, the Dog Park, the Needles Eye Park, I think they're maybe that would be the first step which appropriate rate, you wanted to, you know, places, you know, and so we are reporting. You're going to get your accessibility that you want. As expensive like you're saying, some of this is making sure that it's accessible. I'm not sure if there's a base funds, I know we built some tiers, different budgets, spend a hundred thousand, so we don't know. But is there a base study or are we able to at least make it accessible?
And that's what I will, we'll have to kind of get into design to determine that. I mean, it's, it's going to boil down to an accessible parking space with a walkway that goes to accessible location in the playground. That's going to be the, the bare minimum to make it that. And what I'll say about that is without knowing a ton about the other city parks, that may be a challenge where you're going to add a lot of cost to some of those other locations. And anytime you have multiple project sites, you're going to see increases in the general cost of a project, mobilization, erosion and sediment control, just things that are inherent to any construction contract. So I, I, I personally think focusing on one property for this application makes more sense because it's going to, it's going to stretch your money further.
I thought that's what we were here for too, was for the Oak Hill City Park.
Yeah. And then, of course.
And then down the road we can do.
Yeah, I left one out too a minute ago, talking about parks, you know, we've, we've acquired property for a, a community park in, in Mendon as well.
But for tonight's.
But that would be brand new. I mean, that's.
There's our new parks that we couldn't use this money for, I don't think.
This, this is also a property where we've, we've done, we did the community survey. We had a steering committee that kind of helped shape the vision for the project. You can show them prior investment in this park, community interest in the project. I, I think like some of these other projects without having a plan and community engagement already done, you're almost, I think, Bill, too far behind like for those properties.
Right.
Not that they shouldn't be a focus for another application cycle or for a congressional directed spending request. I think, you know, we have a couple of months here to get this thing done. This seems to be what makes the most sense. So.
Do you have a figure in mind that makes more sense? I like your 200,000.
I, I would go with the 200,000 and here's the thing, you know, we kind of need the information, what you guys are comfortable with tonight. It can come back next month when we're going to do the actual, you know, resolution and that's when we'll, we'll just confirm the exact amount. So I can look at both options. I can look at, you know, one seven, one, we'll start with looking at 150 and then looking at 400 and seeing what the difference in the two is. Maybe that's the best thing to do. And then you guys can make the decision at that meeting.
I just want to make sure we don't short-change the park because this has been a hot topic for all of us for the whole city. Cause a lot of people come here, even people from out of town come and do those softball tournaments and all that. I mean, a lot of people use our park.
Well, you're going to have a renovated baseball complex, a new skate park, and then improvements to this playground. I mean, this, what it was six months ago to what it's going to be is really, it's some, going to be something special. So I, I think kind of what I've, I'm understanding is we'll go away using both the 150 and $200,000 versions and come back at the next meeting and present the difference. And then I think at that meeting, you guys can make a decision on what, what you want to do. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, speaking of the city park, the contractors plan to be onsite, beginning work on the week of September 18th. And during that week on the 21st, the contractor for the skate park will be in town. So we're going to try to plan a groundbreaking ceremony for September 21st. And I'll have to get back to you on the time and all that, but if you can kind of put that on your calendar. And Sam, hopefully you'll have some time that day. We just have to get all the working pieces together to set the time.
All right, guys. Anyone want to do a motion to consider the approval? That we need to do that?
I don't think, I think that's, I think, yeah, I think he got what, just some kind of general idea and then next month.
All right. The next order of business is to request a change of the meeting from November 13th to November 6th, the next council meeting.
That, I have a vacation every year during that week. And of the, of November 13th, it's always that same week. So I'm requesting that we change the meeting to November 6th.
Somebody have a problem with it? I, I'll move that, we change the meeting to November the 6th, 2023.
Sounds great. I'll second that.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carried. Number 10, discussion on future plans of former BB and T bank building.
I put this on here so that we could get something going, some decision or if you want to hear proposals or, I don't know, I, it's up to you all.
I personally would like to see our veterans memorial go there. Please speak out now. Anyone for that? Veterans Memorial? Good idea, bad idea? Talk to me.
As in tearing the building down and then putting it?
No, actually I think we should leave it up. It's a nice centerpiece. If it's not structurally, you know, if it's structurally sound, we could do some things inside. We could get some grant money renovated inside. I'd like to see the run for the wall come through here. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I'd like to see that happen here. I think that would be great for our town. We have the banners up now. We're going to take them down soon because of winter time. We could display those year round in there. That's just something I've been kicking around, but you know.
I don't know if that building is safe enough.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't know if it's structurally sound. I just heard it was a little bit of asbestos and that's about it. And a little bit, a little bit of mold, one or the other, one of the two, yeah. But that could be taken care of, I'm sure. All right, all right. I think that was inside though, mainly. I don't have a budget in mind. I just, just started working with a couple of people and a couple of ideas kicked around, so. But we all haven't had a chance to get our workshop together so we can all discuss it. So just threw it out there now. So hopefully somebody else could throw something out there now. Any ideas? Mr. Britt's gone. He had a couple of ideas before, but he has left, Mr. Britt rather.
I'd like to know what the cost of demolishing is, just taking it down completely.
If we take it down completely though, we're going to just be.
Now, you can still have a veterans, veterans.
I'm saying though, we're just, I mean, that's just more cost, you know, we're already.
You're still going to have to pay to renovate it though.
Not that much.
I would be curious to see what the figures are.
I would too, but I mean.
The most common comments I've had in the community, and I've talked to a whole lot of people, we all have, about the BB and T building. And the two most common themes that I hear is to see if the city can get that back in private enterprise. And the other comment, like Chris alluded to, that I hear a lot is to repurpose that property without the building there.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not, I'm not sold on either one. I'm just saying that's what I commonly hear.
Why can't we get figures on all of it and make a decision after we see the numbers on all of them, all of the options?
Well, it looks like it's going to be, we're going to be at a loss either way, so.
And I get comments about a museum, Hank Williams, there's signs everywhere, Hank Williams leading you here, but then there's really nothing here. We got one thing right up here at the top of the street people park and look at.
There are a lot of veterans groups also that would help us obtain some funding to renovate that building. Just the thought, you know, for you guys to think about.
Can we throw like an online thing out there like you did for the steering committee or for the park? Just so that the public can, John Q, out here in the public can throw out an idea, maybe something we haven't heard of and give the public a, a voice back into it to say, hey, this is an idea I have. Can you, you know, you might get an overwhelmingly bunch that want to do one certain thing or go another way or you might not get nothing, but at least we have said here, we want to hear what you want done with this building.
What about having listening sessions in different parts of the community for people to talk to us about it? If they're not going to go online?
Tyler says he can do it. He can do the survey online.
Did they, there was one done for the city park, correct?
Has, has the New River, New River Gorge Regional Development Authority been involved at all with this, I'll call it what it is, problem?
No, we have not. We haven't done anything with this at all. Nothing.
Okay, I, I would.
That's why I'm bringing it.
I, I think they probably should be consulted. It's a, you know, a, a possible economic development item right in the middle of our town.
Unless Allison has.
She's back here looking like she's chomping at the bit.
Okay, go, go for it, Allison.
As far as the bank building is concerned, ladies and gentlemen, we, of course, I'm not in any kind of position to make a decision at all or speak under any authority for the city when it comes to this building. So really all I'm doing is getting information together as best I can to present to you guys. So really when we look at that building, the options that we're going to have in front of us, one is going to be to sell it. In reality, we would be selling it as a loss or we would be selling it as a law, at a loss compared to what we paid for it. No getting around that whatsoever. One of the things I'm learning about, and this is through, can't remember the name of the organization, I apologize, but I'm learning about land banking and how that could help us as a city. One of the things that we could do if we do, do decide to sell this building is we could put some stipulations on that deed that require this building, we can seek out the, the best use of the property and then sell it at a reduced price. We would have to agree to take a loss, of course, on it, but we could then sell it at a reduced price to an organization with the understanding that within a specific time period, they were going to build what it was that we agreed that they were going to be building there. So option number one is going to be to, to sell it, realize, you know, it's, we're selling it as a loss, but it's a sunk cost and we've got to be able to move forward if that's what we decide. Also, the building is owned by municipality, so, you know, we can't just go into this building and like put a KFC in there if we thought that was a great idea. For example, we have, because it's owned by municipality, we can't just do whatever we want with this building. We would be able to allow like nonprofits to lease it, for example, things like that could be potential options. But the building code is very strict and it's strict for a good reason. It's, it's, it's strict to protect people and property. The building currently, my understanding from Chapman Engineering, doesn't comply with a whole lot of the current building code. So it's going to cost a lot of money to renovate that building. It doesn't matter who does it. It's going to cost a lot of money. It would have arguably cost more to turn that building into a facility that was going to house city council and council chambers, because that's a special purpose building. A bank is a special purpose building. Chambers, this is a special purpose building. So the cost to turn it into that specifically would have been more than just about anything else we could have done with that building. So, you know, I can, like I said, I can, I can find a way to make that building sellable. I can't make it worth more money for sure. So I, our options would be to sell it, to renovate it into, you know, maybe a museum on the bottom and offices on top, something like that. But it's either going to be sell it, renovate it. Watch it rot is also an option. I don't think anybody wants that, but it's an option. It seems to be kind of where we are right now with the building, or we can find a way to repurpose that land. But really we've got four options and, and we've got to pick. And the New River Gorge Regional Development Authority has openly offered to help us with, with any kind of plans that we would like, that we would like to do with that building moving forward. Yeah, they're, they're already on board.
Is there any way to get them here?
Oh, and if we sell it, we have to, I believe we'll have to auction it or something like that. We can't just pick somebody to sell it to.
He's deceased.
Diane, I don't think it's necessary for them to come here. I think we can meet with them and then just bring the ideas back to you.
Mr. Willis, didn't you have, we talked about the building, you, you had some plans?
That's what the land is.
Now they structured that deal where we can, as you, or you as a council, for us and city can guarantee it's all in. So put it back in the private market, let's else do the, on the, I mean, on that burn.
Yeah, that's, that's land use, exactly. Yeah, to give us options for that. Yeah, to give us options for that.
Got any buyers? I said, do we have any buyers?
Depends on the price.
It all sounds good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, let's move along. We'll think about it, folks, consideration to approve the City of Oak Hill Youth Council Program and Application.
So this is something that I've put together, if everybody's had a chance to look at the application, and I'm open to feedback, but my goal and purpose is to catch all of the kids that we have between ninth and 12th grade to give them buy-in and involvement in the city. It's not a particular project I have in mind, it's getting these youth together and let them come up with things that they'd like to see happen or do. I talked to the guidance counselor of the high school, and this also would count towards their volunteer hours for graduation, so. Anyone who would join, it would also serve the purpose of going to their volunteer hours. So there's no particular project in mind, it's just getting buy-in in our community and the ownership from these high school students that will hopefully someday come back. That's all.
So you say hopefully come back, so you thinking they're gonna leave?
Well, they'll leave to go to college.
Okay.
Hopefully, they come back after they graduate.
Hopefully, they have.
That's what I'd like to see my kids do.
Number 12, consideration to repeal Oak Hill Municipal Code, White Oak Rail Trail Committee First Reading.
Do we have to vote on number 11?
Do we?
That's, that's what I was gonna ask, do, did there need to be a vote for consideration?
Okay, my bad, sorry, guys. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Motion's been properly moved in second, all those in favor? All those opposed?
Does Beckley have anything similar?
They do, it's a Beckley Youth Events Council.
Krista, is this like what the county, or correct me if I'm wrong, isn't there like, is it like fat leadership or fat youth or? Leadership fat?
You have any other questions?
It's, that answered it perfectly.
And your name, please? Rachel. Very good, thank you.
Oh, welcome back. I too had to come back, it is what it is. Okay. Yeah, I had a nice dream job in Key West, unfortunately, I had to come back, they ran out of money. All right, number 12, folks. Consideration to repeal Oak Hill Municipal Code, White Oak Rail Trail Committee, this is the first reading.
This was, um, this is on here because we talked about the committees, that was one you decided not to re-point, so we need to repeal the code.
I, I would make a motion to repeal the, the code you spoke of, the 2.20.07.0.
Can you get a second?
I'll second.
And I, I just wanna say it was, in, in kicking off that project to create the rail trail, it was very much needed, but the, the need for it declined, and, and also, I see Beth Gardner, who was very active with the White Oak Rail Trail, is, uh, somebody has nominated her to be on the Recreation Committee.
It's been properly moved in second, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is carried. Number 13, update from the Business Owners Association, excuse me.
All right, so, uh, ladies and gentlemen, I guess you guys probably know, when you come up with more people than just yourself, that means you have progress to report. So that's what we're here for, and it's all, it's all really good things, so, um, we have, uh, we've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes for our Business Owners Association, uh, as far as being able to form, uh, the association, uh, we officially have our tax ID number and all that good stuff now, so. Uh, the association is chartered within the state of West Virginia, that's, um, that's official now, we've got our Board of Directors, four of the five spaces are filled. Uh, your Board of Directors for the Business Owners Association is going to be myself. Um, I, I own Pinhead, so I do own a local business in Oak Hill, um, I'm also Economic Development Director. The, uh, Economic Development Director will serve on the Board, um, for the Business Owners Association as a liaison, because that's one of the, um, one of the objectives that we have for the association, is that we will serve effectively as liaisons between our business community and our municipal government. Um, our members of the Board are myself, uh, Brandon Shaw, who's not here with us today, owns New River ATV, uh, Rachel Davis, and Kevin Willis, so we're all Oak Hill business owners, and, uh, Rachel was going to explain to you guys more of, uh, what exactly the parameters are gonna be for the association.
I'm really glad to heard a lot of things I've heard here tonight, coming from the community and so is the council, and I think that it's all coming in perfect timing, things just kind of fall together the way they should, when the right people are in the right places, and I feel like that's what's happening right now. So, uh, between us, one of the first meetings, well, the first meeting we ever had together was a note in my head that I hope not to forget, was that he showed up in his work attire with a dirt smudge on his nose. She showed up in her work attire, you know, she was brushed and frazzled, but so on the ball and everything together. And there I was, cleaning a house, it's one of my jobs right now, is property management. So I really appreciated that we were all there in our, you know, ready to work, just doing the work, getting our hands dirty, and then trying to build something together for the benefit and future of the community, our kids, that, you know, my daughter's 22 years old, she's graduated, she's here, I want her to stay. And those sorts of things, so. But right now, what we're thinking is the membership's gonna be open to all business owners, service providers, and owners of commercial buildings in Oak Hill, and, uh, towns near, uh, in the perimeter or immediately nearby that consider Oak Hill as a town. And, um, we have five key objectives, we're gonna start working toward right away. We have a survey developed that's ready to go out, and, uh, yeah, it's ready to go out, we're just getting the platform, getting it all functioned in. Um, uh, main objectives right off the bat are to improve communication between the local businesses and the elected government, um, to enhance business support by collaborating with existing entities for programming and learning opportunities and networking, um, to help anybody in our community, whether they're beginning off, or they've been doing this for 35 years. And, um, increase visibility, helping people understand how to get on the Google Maps from something so simple to putting up a sign in their window, um, identifying opportunities for growth and strengthening the business climate overall. We will encourage all the members to be active and take active roles by participating in subcommittees, or even, uh, coming up with a subcommittee to in, in making, forming a subcommittee and actually being a part of that. So through all these, um, partnerships and collaborations, we're gonna bring in some learning resources, classes, workshops, peer learning networks, and I think it's gonna be a good time, I'm super stoked. And, um, if you have any questions, we have an email address.
Kevin, what's your input?
There's a big gap between, you know, business owners and city government, I don't know what we're doing, we don't know here sometimes. So there needs to be that collaboration between business owners, and it takes business owners talking to each other and a community, make a community thrive. I mean, you look at all our surrounding communities and businesses talk to each other. Um, and that's a big problem in this area. So it's like, we're not all enemies, we need to work to the greater good. And there's a lot of things that we're gonna be doing as a group, like at the workshops and things, some of the simple, I mean, tourism involves Google. So when you go to a new area, everybody goes to Google and says, where do I wanna eat, where do I wanna go, where? So the thing is, it's just as simple as helping some of our smaller businesses and people that are, that don't understand that, you know, come to the workshop, we're gonna teach you how to get on Google, we're gonna teach you how to de-locate. So that way, instead of everybody running the fat bill that is on Google, they can start finding people in Oak Hill, you know? But it's all like, like I said a million times, you know, Ace is our big advantage. All these people are coming here to spend money. And there's, and when you're on vacation, every time you're in a group, and you're on vacation, you're spending money. You don't, you're not pennyworth. So the thing is, you've got all these people coming to Ace and, and to the area, spend money, we need to keep them here to spend money. And I think through education, through this group and collaboration with different business owners, we, we can make a habit.
Like when they come up out of Ace, I mean, there should be some kind of signage, billboard, something's pointing right this, pointing left that. Okay, yeah, because when they come up out of there, they shoot right over to the foreland.
When you think about BP, for instance, and, and not just some, these ain't exact numbers, but when Ace holds an event down there, they not, they quadruple in business.
Yeah.
And you can't get on their property. So, you know, that, that right there, I mean, just tells you right there that they'll stop and spend the money, they should know where. I mean, a lot of people that we talked to that are travelers or something, will be like, hey, you know, Don Williams asked Cafe 110, awesome place to eat. Where's that? They don't even, 9510, probably know that the other two is a town, connect to 19, they don't even know that. So like, there's that signage, but like I said, I think just collaboration with business owners, and, and being able to work with the city council and, and the city, I think it would be great.
Any questions for us at all, guys? Ladies and gentlemen?
Sounds great.
Thank you all, and thank you guys for the opportunity also to, to be able to build this, it's great for my business personally and for my family, and, uh, I'm honored that that we have this opportunity to build this up and to help support all of the business owners in our community. So thank you all also for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys need to pay your taxes, right? Number 14, thank you, guys, the consideration to amend ordinance 2208, council and mayor annual salary, pay the mayor and council members $100 per meeting to attend appointed meetings, first reading.
This is, um, has asked to be put on the agenda. Uh, we were, when the raise was put into effect for council, also, there was, um, and the addition of that last paragraph of $100 for each standing committee that every council member attended. Um, the proposal is to remove that part of the ordinance.
I make a motion to remove that part of the ordinance.
I'll second.
Motion's been properly moved in second, all those in favor? Uh, all opposed? Motion is carried. All right, that, this concludes unfinished business, now we'll have, uh, department reports, if we don't have any reports, we'll go ahead and take a vote to accept them all already. No one, no reports? Can you get a motion?
I'll, I'll move to accept the department reports.
I'll second.
Motion's been properly moved in second to accept the department head reports, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, we move on to council comments.
Nobody else does, man, I can figure, I've got a couple of things.
It's all good.
Well, I, I wanna just, she's still in here, I wanna give a shout out to what Michelle's doing for the, the Will and For Hope thing down there, and being in meetings with her, this thing's gonna be huge. It's not just some little tiny, you know, fundraiser, this thing is going to be massive, it's bringing a lot of people into the city for a very, very good cause. And, uh, I, I, I really thank her for what she's doing, doing on that, I've just got three other things. Um, addressed to the city manager, and she can, however order you wanna put them in, or however you wanna respond, I'm just gonna throw all three of them out there and let you have it, one of them was what I had mentioned last time, if there was any update on the, the, the trademark, or the, or the, whatever you call it for the logo. The other thing was the, I think, um, updating the council on the fire department addition, and the retention pond, updating on that. That's all I have.
On the logo, I have been re, doing some research, I've decided I need Bill File to help me with that. There's, there's different options, trade, trademark, copyright, all that, so I need some, I just need some guidance on which way to go with that. Um, the fire department addition, I met with the fire department before we actually were getting ready to issue or get into the part about issuing the bonds. And, um, when I talked to them and told them what was involved and of, about the payment that would be coming from their fire levy money, they decided, well, I left, and then while, after I left, they decided to not go ahead with that fire department addition. So we still have the plans and those are paid for. Um, so if they decide to do that later, that work has already been finished, so they, uh, they decided not to do that, and the retention pond is working. Um, it has tremendously helped Euler Avenue, and I believe even back on your, on Riner.
She calls me every time it rains.
Every time it rains, I send him a text. Uh, they're still finishing up Highland, hooking Highland in, but other than that, it's, it's, it's doing its job and keeping that water off of Euler Avenue.
Any further comments, anyone?
I would just like to thank the, uh, everybody that worked on Oakley Festival. I think it was a successful festival, seemed well organized, and, uh, I, I had fun, and I think a whole lot of other people did too. And I appreciate that, and also, I, I wanna compliment the fire department on, on their decision, that was a tough decision for them to make, but, um, to not to move forward to that, with that at this time, and, and I, I think. And, and I, I think it was a prudent decision to make. So thank you, all the membership of the fire department.
And we did send a letter to the contractor that had the lowest bid on that building or on that addition, so they have been notified.
And that was 1.6 million, am I correct?
Yeah, yes, it was one.
Seven, 1.7.
1.6, I think, or maybe in between.
107.
It was a lot of money.
It was a lot of money, yes.
We're not spending, yep. And thank you, Mr. Gill, for your service on the fire department.
Any other comments from council? Future agenda items? Anyone have anything you wanna get on there? At this time, all right? Any announcements? Okay, well, I've hit my nose on the microphone enough times, so I think it's time to go home. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
You.
Good meeting, sir.
Thank you, sir.